I'm meeting the Ketchikan City Council. Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Seaverton?
Here.
West?
Here.
Singy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to communications. We got a letter back from, I think, the Department of Transportation on the Mills Street. Otherwise, let's go into persons to be heard. Susan, you want to start us off?
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Susan Peters, 567 North Tongas Highway. Good evening, and I come to you tonight as the Chair of the Downtown Steering Committee and also owner of Scanlon Gallery and Artic Spirit Gallery downtown. A few weeks back, a meeting was requested by businesses in the downtown area to discuss the increase in conditional use permits in doorways hawking and barking that's going on downtown. It seems to have escalated over the last three or four years and maybe even longer, but this, it's just becoming really horrible. So we had a very good meeting, well-attended. Most stakeholders were there, and the discussion came to that we would really like to see more enforcement done on these issues and also consideration of no conditional use permits in the doorways. Our visitor industry is very important to our community, and I would say almost on a daily basis, I get complaints from visitors that are stopped or asked almost every other store on certain streets and on the docks. And businesses who don't partake in this aren't happy with that either. This is not what we want our community to look like or feel. If you go to Mexico or in certain countries where they do this type, and this is how they operate business, it's different, but when you come to Alaska, they really, really are, you know, so it affects our industry. You can go to TripAdvisor, you can go to all kinds of places and see all kinds of little notations about this, and it has been brought up before. Anyways, I did contact Juno, Sitka, Skagway to find out how they have handled this problem because, again, they have had, have different businesses and such, and basically, they really had to increase their enforcement. Skagway has someone that just walks around downtown giving citations. Juno has something also, and they get 150 the first offense, 250 the next offense, 350 the third offense, so you know it starts to hurt. Anyways, we've gone to the planning commission meeting this last week ago. We went to the borough assembly meeting on Monday, and we just feel like we need to really take hold of this. And it has to come from the governing bodies. We have two governing bodies that control those conditional use permits are from the borough, and the city does the citation. And you can call the police department. The police department do not have time to handle this kind, and by the time a policeman comes down there, you know, they can see that and they stop because they know they're not supposed to do it. I'll just mention one more thing is that part of the problem is that the doorways in a lot of the businesses are inverted in, and that's kind of so people can walk in, you know, rain and with the marquees and such. Well, that's considered private property, but, so that's how a lot of people get away with it, and that's how they can have a conditional use permit in those doorways because it's private property. So they, they need that permit to operate business there. If they're not allowed to, even though that's their property, do anything outside of their door, that would really help, so that would need to be a change in some codes there. Because this way, they're inside and they can conduct business or however they call it, even though the ordinance with the city is they call it peddlers or something, the words are a little bit. So I think it needs to be looked at. Any questions?
Under that Juno stuff you look at, who enforces that? The police or the managers of it?
Police department. And I believe they have the best practice in Juno. They all, I, I believe they have someone that goes around from there also. I know Skagway has hired a separate person.
That enforces that?
Right.
Okay.
That's hired to just enforce that and probably do other things. I know currently, the borough hires what they call an ambassador in its CPV funds, and they go around town, you know, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what they all do, but, you know, that could be a collaboration between the city and the borough there.
Now, Dick Allen applied for the job already.
Did he?
Yeah. So we need somebody. He's a hell of a, anybody else, Dick?
Yeah, Susan, can you describe a little bit more what's going on?
Okay, and it'd be good, I mean, it's almost over, the season is, but if, if people have noticed it, bringing family members around town. You have people in doorways handing out brochures, asking you to come in, come in for your free gift, you know, this and that, so they're, they're talking to everybody that walks by, you know, and if they can get their attention to bring them in. And then, I, I don't spend a lot of time on the docks, but I hear that down on the private property, it's a little bit louder with the hawking and barking for tours, you know. Also, the tour operators, and this is nothing against independent tour operators, you know, they just need maybe more space someplace else rather than in a doorway. This is, you know, they're in there trying to get people, you know, wildlife tour, you know, and some of them get a little bit, you know, so every time someone's walking down the street, you're getting approached three or four times. And you're just walking down the street. I know someone else said it's like someone drunk on the street, you know. People have the right to walk down the street without being approached. And this is how I look at it. They...
Anybody else? Thanks, Sue.
Okay.
And next. Fred?
Yes.
Come on up.
My name is Fred Abayian, and I'm with Sam et cetera. We've been in business 30 years downtown on Mission Street. I have a good bird's eye view of what's going on on the corner of Mission and Main. There's, I'll just describe what's happening a little bit. There's usually tour groups on the corner on one side and a tour group on the other side. The tour group on the left by the theater, they're behind some boards, but they're yelling at people across the street to come over. I mean, is this, I mean, they're, you know, they're actually, you know, you can hear them from my store quite easily. They're yelling at them, "Come, come on over for a tour, come on, come on, we'll give you a good deal." And so they're, people, you know, they might be walking across the street, but they're yelling at them, or people walking right in front of them, they're talking pretty loudly at them to come and courage and take a tour. The guys on the other side are in the doorway, but I've seen them venture out on the sidewalk, talking frantically with people, trying to get them on the tour, "Come on, we'll give you a good deal." They've gone outside the doorway, they're not standing there all the time, you know, they get caught up in their talk and stuff. So I've got a pretty good view of what's happening. It just, it makes our town look real tacky, and it doesn't do us any service, I don't think, to have this kind of stuff going on about being regulated. I think I agree with Sue, we need to do something about it. If there's codes that are in existence that prohibit this, we should enforce them. If they're not codes, we should have the codes made. This kind of stuff can't go on because it looks pretty tacky to me, and I don't think tourists are getting a good feel what's happening in Ketchikan, that they're getting kind of, it's almost like harassment all the time. Every time you go on the corner, there's somebody talking to you or encouraging you to take a tour, and you go by the doorways. One store owner said, "Well, I've got to hire somebody to hawk because I got to compete." That's what they're all, they're feeling the pressure, I've got, they're all saying this. "I've got to hire somebody to compete with Joe Blow down around the corner." So they're all, you know, they're hiring hawkers, and it just looks pretty, like, it looks tacky to me, and it's, it's a tacky feel to come to Ketchikan and be in, and being talked to all the time, being encouraged nicely, "Oh, come on, this, you know, to take our tour, come in the store," and stuff like that. So I think we need to act on this. Somebody said we better act before it gets worse. I think it's already bad. I don't think we should wait any longer. I think there should be enforcement for next year set in place, so this behavior can't go on. It just, it just is not doing our town any good.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I skip to DePoo because I bet you're talking on the same side?
Yes, I am, respected councilman. Same thing, I think you've heard it all. I had made a point where the KPD just put in a brand-new building, selling tours. A lot of these people selling tours on the street, obviously, you've heard it, they're giving out flyers. If they need to sell tours, I don't see why another building cannot be acquired by them maybe or by someone else and put more of these tour people in that building as rented space. And then, so if you need a tour, you go there and you buy your tour. And what Susan and Fred said, you know, you're walking down the street and they're just giving out, you know, they, they want you in the store, but under the guise of selling a tour. I think what Fred said, it's tacky, it's hurting our image, it's hurting, I think it's hurting the town. I really think we need to do something about it because, again, what Fred said, we had a business owner at the meeting the other day saying that to compete, he's going to have to hire someone. Now, if he thinks that way, you have another 10 people thinking that way, now you're going to have a huge problem. So before it gets that big, I think we need to tackle it and get it taken care of.
Any questions?
Just so, I was at that meeting also, and so then I took the opportunity to walk that area, and so I'm pretty familiar with what happens there, and it is disgraceful. When I inquired into this, I was told that most of this happens on private property and that these people are on a private property and they're actually paying the business money to be there. Is that...
You know, I don't do it, I don't condone it, so I don't know how it works. That being said, I know some people do it, but I think it works both ways. I think the businesses approach maybe the tour guy because the business wants his flyer handed out, but also the tour guy might say, "You know what, I'll send you so many people a day, but let me have use of your space." So I really don't know how it works, but I would think both sides.
Were there any suggestion, I'm sorry.
Nope, keep going.
Were there any suggestions that came from that meeting as to how you guys felt we could help with that?
I guess we were trying to find out what the code is and how we can implement it, and what Susan said, she was going to check with Skagway and Juno, which she did, and then so she found out what to find out. Now we need to figure out who polices it. Does the, does the police department or does another department? I'm not sure. But it, it's becoming a very cheap image, you know, we've never had this here before. I don't, I don't, I don't feel that it should, it should be allowed to become a bigger problem. It, it should be just, you know, nipped in the bud. This is the first year that I see it happening to this scale. You know, we've been here almost 20 years, so, you know, last year it started. I think we need to, you know, put an end to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, J. S. O.
I just wanted to suggest that maybe the city manager get together with our city attorney and find out exactly what the enforcement codes are, so we know exactly what we're talking about, what's covered.
I could tell you that.
Well, okay.
The code defines the downtown business district as a 1,000-foot radius from the center of Mission and Main Street. Okay? In that area, the only thing that's truly prohibited is on, from private property is the amplification of anything that's go, what, through electronic amplification, music, microphones, whatever it may be. Historically, the council has taken a hands-off approach from anything that's been done from private property. If they've stepped out onto the sidewalk or tried to herd people into the store, then we, then we have the ability to involve KPD and deal with it. But if they're simply standing on their property and, you know, hollering out or yelling out to people, absolutely, I don't disagree with anything that's been said so far tonight. It is really bad. But we simply don't have the tools to deal with anything, with those type of things that happen from the private property side of the house.
Can you get this stuff from Skagway and Juno for the council?
Yeah.
Make sure we get that, and so we can start looking at that.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, DePoo.
Thank you.
Yes, Dick?
Just a comment. The hawking that goes on at the booths is rather obnoxious, and it's moved to the street. I won't say anything else.
Anybody else? All right. Next on the list, Linda.
Good evening, my name is Linda Kunsalger. I reside at 841 Forest Avenue, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Ketchikan, Alaska Small Business Development Center. And my update is that I want to thank you very much for the funding that you provided our office. It provided me the opportunity to travel to Grapevine, Texas last week to take part in American SBDC Annual Conference. And this is an educational opportunity with, this year, there are workshops and sessions pretty much scheduled all three days. And this year, it was really great because I would, I would mark the ones that I wanted to go to, not looking at the times, and then I'd have to make a decision which one is the one that's going to be the most valuable to bring home. So it was really exciting, and I thank you for that. The other exciting thing that happened was for the second year in a row, the Alaska Small Business Development Center team presented, we presented, so people had to choose us if they wanted to come and listen to our continuing aha moments from our Baldridge journey. And I spoke to you about Baldridge before. Baldridge is the Baldridge Performance Excellence Program, and it is actually part of the federal government. If you, if you Googled it, you would actually be taken to a government website. And it is really all about seven categories of business that you, one is leadership. So in your organization, you would think about how your leadership is in your organization and how you, the steps that you take. They have programs for governments, nonprofits, which governments are, educators, healthcare professionals, and for-profits. And you actually apply, you put together an application, it's 50 pages, and you would submit that to the state level, and they would take it and analyze it and give you your feedback, and we've already done that. So our next step is take it to the regional level, which is in the Washington area, and we have it on our, on our projected goals. We've got the strategic plan of when we're going to do that. It's not this next year, but it is in the future. And so when you do that, if you win at that level and you go to the national level and you're a winner, the President of the United States of America hands you a award. So it is a very, very prestigious award, but it also is a great program in that what I've seen from being involved in it since I became part of the Small Business Development Center is that we have large distances that we provide services. Our state is so vast, but we have come together as a team, and now everybody in our organization, I think we have 20 to 21 people, we're living Baldridge. Everybody is involved, and that is really pretty exciting. The other thing that comes to play in that is that business advisors are working together now more than ever. We have just hired a person who, her expertise is marketing. So I sent her some stuff that I have on marketing, and I'm waiting for her to send me some things. And if the opportunity presents itself, we can actually co-counsel clients. So it's really exciting to see how the organization is growing and how that benefits our stakeholders and our clients. So I wanted to thank you for that. I gave you a handout, and one of the programs that I went to was on general, generational communication. And whether you're hiring someone, you're selling, you're in a position where your customer, your coworker, it really does make a difference, the generation that comes because everybody has a different perspective. And so I spoke a little bit about that today at our third Thursday program, which is our Lunch and Learn. And that's an opportunity for business people to come and network, you know, as a little educational component. So I shared that with the people that came today, and it spurred some great conversations on, you know, on communication in general, and then the life-work balance. So I think it's, I'm really excited that people attended today, and I think it's going to be a great program through, through the winter and spring months. The other thing that I wanted to let you know about is that when I went to the conference, I was actually honored and privileged to be invited by a person that I had met at the conference prior who was from California, and she has a small business, and she asked me to serve on a panel, and the panel was called Undercover Directors Best Practices. And the people that were on the panel, some of them were people that, I try to always go to their, their sessions because they're just so wonderful, you know, they're like my heroes. And, and here I find myself on a panel, and I'm thinking, wow, this is, this is, I, I was very humbled. But it was just a really great experience, and of course, I talked about Baldridge, and, and some of the people that were in that audience actually came to the presentation that we gave. I was on a panel with people from Illinois, Virginia, Texas, Pennsylvania, and North Dakota, and they all had really good pearls of wisdom to share. So that's my update. I'm just so excited. I have so much to share with people. Now it's just packaging it so that when, when the opportunity presents it, I can share what I can with clients. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Linda, here. And next, we have Stephen Reeves.
Hi, good evening, Stephen Reeves, number five, Creek Street. I wanted to address a matter on your consent agenda, general government aid to the encroachment permit on Thomas Street right-of-way. I represent an owner who is interested in restoring a building, and there's a kind of first phase dealing with, with a dangerous stairway and deck issue, part of which approaches on city right-of-way. And as you know, in this, dealing with any historic building in the whole part of town, there's either city encroachments on private land or vice versa. This one is encroaching on city land, and I wanted to be available for, if you need any further perspective on it, I'll stay and wait for the agenda item.
Anybody have any questions? I'm all right, so. Thank you very much, Sue. All right. Anybody else here that would like to address the council that didn't sign up? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Consent agenda. Anybody want to add anything, or, there's not that much?
Your Honor, I'm here to consent.
Move and second it. Adam, please can you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of September 4th, 2014. Revocable and limited permit to work on or encroach upon the platted right-of-way, upon the right-of-way, 120 and 122 Thomas Street. Amendment number five final to contract number 11-04, City Hall Siding and Roof Replacement Design, Bizon and Associates Architects Incorporated, and Budget Transfer, Water Division Operating Supplies and Infrastructure and Plant Maintenance Materials Account.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Singy?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. That brings us down to new business. There is no unfinished business. Brings us down to new business, 781, Financial Compliance Audit for year ending December 31, 2014. We've got an option to continue with Dirk or go out for solicitation. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorize the finance director to negotiate a contract with Meacham Richardson and Company for the finance and compliance audit for the city of Ketchikan for the year ending December 31st, 2014. Said contract to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Second. DePoo didn't second it. Anybody want to speak to it? Dick?
I got, I got a question for Bob. I, it seemed like on last year's, we increased the price, oh, $10,000 or $15,000 because of some changes in government auditing requirements. And it was unusual, and I was wondering if those requirements, now that the auditor knows how they're going to work, will the price, will that price go back down?
Unfortunately, no. The work that they're required to do is there, it's not, it's not exactly a fraud audit, but they're now required to test the fraud. Consider that when they're doing their audit work, and that requires test the work on their fraud. That won't go away, that's a new standard, and it's a requirement that all auditors test the fraud. And that's a big time to do.
Anything else, Dick?
No comment.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Now he comes to me and asks me if I think anybody's fraudy in the country.
Fed's at work again. Thanks, the Fed's.
All right. Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Brings us down to 782, Resolution 142569, accepting a $200,000 grant from Ketchikan Gateway Borough for the reconstruction of Hole-in-the-Wall Harbor. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve Resolution Number 142569, accepting a $200,000 grant from the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for design of the reconstruction of Hole-in-the-Wall Harbor and establishing an effective date.
Second. Move and second it.
It's to accept a CPV, CPV grant, thank you very much, Borough Assembly.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Brings us down to 783, Contract 1402, Design of Hole-in-the-Wall Harbor Reconstruction, P&amp;D Engineering. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council approve Contract Number 1402, Design of Hole-in-the-Wall Harbor Construction between the City of Ketchikan and P&amp;D Engineering, Engineers, Inc. at a cost not to exceed $74,030. Authorize funding from the Harvard Department's 2014 Hole-in-the-Wall Reconstruction Capital Account and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second. Move and second it. Does somebody want to speak to it?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Steve, how many stalls are in Hole-in-the-Wall?
Port Harbors Director Steve Kopran. We've got 27 reserve mortgage stalls out there and another, oh, probably about 100-foot of transit mortgage. Currently, two of the reserve mortgage stalls are not usable because they're right where the floats are the most broken between the sections. It's about, it's about 5% of our, I'm sorry, 2.5% of our, our total inventory. You know, that's why Hole-in-the-Wall's been at the bottom of the priority list of our capital improvement program, but it's, it's to the point where if we, if we don't do something real soon, there's not going to be anything left to improve.
What is the major cost in that project?
The floats in the piles. And then after that, the, we're going to have to zigzag down the access ramp to keep it within ADA compliance. Right now, well, you've been out there, but for those that haven't been out there, it's, the, the access ramp going down there is four and a half times the ADA allowable slope, so.
Go ahead. Well, let's start with DePoo.
I just was curious as if we ever use any other engineering company other than P&amp;D.
The city went out in 2011 for RFPs for engineering services, so we don't have to go out every project. And, and this was the next-to-last of the projects that was on the scope of work for their firm to do, so.
This is the next to the last, and then after that last one is done, it goes back out?
We'll go out for another RFP for engineering services. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, Steve, is there enough similarities between what's going to be done here and what's been done in Bar Harbor and the design work that P&amp;D's been doing that they won't reinvent the wheel every time, like ramps?
This ramp's going to be quite a bit longer than the ones we have in the current harbors to get all the way out there.
But a ramp's a ramp. But a ramp's a ramp.
You still have to do the engineering drawings, though.
The contractors that build it, PND don't build them.
I know. The one for floats, one of the nines, actually will be built here by Homestead.
Well, I think you know where I'm going. We need to utilize everything we can and those guys need to be, be doing that and not reinventing a wheel, that's the comment.
Yes, sir.
So I rely upon you guys to make sure that happens.
Bob, so what is the, what are we thinking those floats are going to be? Are they going to be nylon square float systems with a wood deck or?
The initial thoughts and the ones the estimates are based on are the ones like we put out at Knutsen Cove and the ones that we're going to put in at float nine, which are alternating flotation tubs versus, and then alternating with ballast tubs, which have the, the flow-through holes in them. So you get the mass of the water to help give some weight to the floats. But it keeps all the, the wood material out of the water.
Would it be a wood deck?
Wood, yes, sir.
Okay, Steve, um, you know, the cost of this really, you know, it's been, I'm the thing that really bothers me because it's so small. And it looks like you're, you know, our portion is going to be like 1.3, I think it says here. Now, does that include a new breakwater?
It includes new piling for the breakwater.
So what, are we going to add something to the piling then? Or is that going to hold the old pi, um, breakwater?
The current plan is to use the current flotation out there, maybe, you know, throw in some more, but it would just replace the piling out there.
Because it was some-
You have to know, all, all these piles are drilled out there. None of these are going to be punched. They're all going to have to be drilled. So that adds to the cost of it.
Well, the cost, you know, the cost of this is what, and I know people really like it and everything. And, but it keeps, I went out there during the rain and wind today just to look at it again. And the breakwater was doing hardly anything to stop anything. So that's one thing I noticed. The ramp is totally a disaster. But the one side over there on the left-hand side, you know, of the floats, that wasn't too bad. The old ones are, I mean, it's the older ones, you know, they have grass and everything growing on them. I don't know if we-
There's nothing left underneath them to connect them together.
The ones on the left or the old ones?
As you're looking out towards the water, the ones on the left. As, as you go out there, they've been sistered together so many times that they failed. And so that's, that's why we've had to string them together with ropes and that's why we don't have any boats moored out where those two breaks are.
Okay. And then we've had, have you looked at other areas? You know, people, you know, Dave always had ideas about other grants. Then we thought about looking at the state because they have CP funds too. I mean, is there any hope that, I mean, I just hate spending that much money on, you know, when I was there, there were two boats in the whole place.
Yes, sir. Well, most grants are 50/50. So if we get our 50% from the state, I don't know what other grant you may look for.
I don't, well, that's what I mean, is there other grants?
We had hoped that Denali Commission, back four years ago, when we were putting together the five-year plan, Denali Commission still had, had some clout and some funding. They have neither right now. And, you know, for projects like this.
Like, yeah, so like I said, I went out there today and two boats were actually using it. Boy, it's the cost for that small thing. I know people like that place and everything. It's just, it's been, it's hard to swallow for me. Anybody else? Bob?
So what, what did we get for the state when we took over those harbors?
Hole-in-the-Wall and Knutsen Cove came as a package. We got a grand total of 686 or 698. I forget, it was 600 and some thousand dollars as a package total. All that went towards the Knutsen Cove float relocation, or float replacement project. That, along with a Denali grant and some other funding we scraped together. So there was really nothing left for Hole-in-the-Wall.
Anybody else? Matt?
I'll just be another bummer. We did the same exact thing with Mountain Point. We took Mountain Point and got, what, $200,000?
We held up for $300,000 on that. They only offered $200,000. Our hope, the one, the nice thing about the launch ramps, both the Bar Harbor launch ramp and the Knutsen Cove launch ramp, we were able to get fishing game grants, which were 75/25. So I told the state we really needed, 300,000 was the minimum that we could, we could take because we hoped to be able, in about another four years, go after another fishing game grant and basically replace Mountain Point without having to, you know, put anything out of our pocket. Plus, we'll be able to, we'll be able to go after a tier one harbor facility grant now that we've taken over Mountain Point as well this year. So Mountain Point shouldn't be a problem funding-wise.
Right. But my point is that we, we continually do this to ourselves when we take over these harbors. And so I'm, I'm a North Ender. I've never used Hole-in-the-Wall. But I don't think any argument was as compelling as Dan Christensen's when he came in and he said he was out there in his small boat. And by small boat, I mean, I think it's under 23-foot bailiner is what he said, going off of memory. And the weather was so bad, he tucked in. If it wasn't for that, he thought a couple of the boats would have swamped out there. I think at times we have to sit there and say, you know, this is more for the greater good. It's a big fishing spot. Getting around Mountain Point can be hazardous in the weather and I think we need to move forward and continue to seek funding from any and all sources that we can get for it.
Anybody else receive?
Thank you, Steve. Yes, sir.
Call the roll.
Singy?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Brings us down to, it brings us down to 7B1 purchase order for modifications to Whitman Lake hatchery bypass line, pool engineering. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I show it to the subparagraph B in one of section 3.12.35 of the Ketchikan NPS code. I move that city council authorize the general manager to issue a purchase order for pool engineering, including the amount of $44,000 for the installation of permanent connection for the secondary bypass line that has been constructed to serve the Whitman Lake hatchery. Establish $6,000 contingency, bringing the total project cost to $50,000 and approve the funding from the electric division Whitman Lake Hydro Project Capital Account.
Second. Who'd been seconded? Bobby, you want to add anything?
Um, my question is, this was all engineered. And we, we accepted those engineering drawings and they were supposed to be adequate to supply the hatchery water. But that's not the way it worked out. And so we had to incur an extra cost. And so I was wondering if there's any participation by the design firm or any of that kind of stuff. Because they made an error. I mean, the Bailey valve didn't pass enough water. So I was wondering if this is one of those things that'll come back under the negotiated settlement at a later date.
Yeah, we're going to ask Andy to address that.
Come on up, Andy.
Good evening, Andy Donato, Electric Division Manager. So to answer that question, yes, that's one of the things in the back package that will be negotiated here as we, as we bring this to a close. I think the project is closing fast. We've got a couple of issues that still remain. And so, yeah, I think that was, I agree with you, it was an oversight. But this is, this is an avenue to, to patch it in permanently. We've discovered, I think, it's, it's necessary to have it. And we have an emergency bypass in right now and we want to make it permanent.
Yes.
And now, any, the, the original design didn't allow for service to that without turning off the hatchery water, is that right?
Correct.
So now we have the availability to continue to supply the hatchery water even when we're working on this stuff?
Correct. Exactly that.
Anybody else? Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Brings us down to vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News for $949.54. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News, the amount of $949.54.
Second. Who'd been seconded? Call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Singy?
Yeah.
Harris?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Brings us down to managers report. Dave?
You know, if I may, your honor, I'd like to ask the fire chief to come up and talk for a minute about the, the 2014 ISO rating.
Very good.
The improvements-
It looks good.
Evening, council mayor. This is the manager, Frank Sherr, Fire Chief. So the ISO rating that we just received brought us down to a 22Y. When I first started here, we were a 58B was the rating classification. We went through the ISO rating about a year ago. They came back, they gave us a 38B. We had our fire marshal audit and our state training audit. And when those things came to fruition there, we come through with flying colors. We were able to reapply to ISO and they took that in consideration, dropped our rating down to a 22Y. As I said in my report, a pretty big accomplishment. I'm pretty proud of all the, the men and women over there at the fire department. They did a great job, our dispatchers up there, the water department with the water that they supply for us there. So just a lot of hard work went into that. It's a pretty big accomplishment and I'd like to acknowledge you guys, the fire department, for stepping up and keeping our insurance rates low. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, chief. Anybody have a question?
Yeah.
Thank you for the good news.
Okay.
Dave?
No, that's it, your honor. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the managers' report? Hearing none. That brings us to, how the new business? Executive sessions. We have one, two, three, four.
Oh, missing something here.
What?
Uh, looks like we missed, I don't know, a whole page, actually. Because there's council comments somewhere.
Yeah.
How weird is that?
We don't need no color.
Well, we can go to council-
Future agenda items and council comments. I don't know where all that went.
Okay.
That's weird.
Well, let's do council comments, then we'll go into executive sessions and if we could, let's do all exec- Say again?
Oh, no, I'm just muttering.
Uh, let's do the executive sessions that involve staff and then we'll do Katie laugh. Sorry. Since we don't have to be here anyway. Council comments, Dick?
Uh, nothing, your honor.
Judy?
Nothing, your honor.
Dan?
Nothing.
Hmm.
Nothing.
Marty?
Ask.
Bob?
No, your honor.
KJ?
Uh, no.
Okay. I have nothing to add. We have a lot of executive sessions. Do we have, and let's start with 15A2, question for executive session, collective bargaining between the city of Ketchikan International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, local 1547. Do we have a motion?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move that city council declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated September 4th, 2014, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the city Ketchikan International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, local 1547, an executive session. In accordance with the findings, the city councils go into executive session in accordance with KMC 2.04, 025A and 1, and B2, and AS 44, 062, 0310C and 1, and 3, and discuss said negotiations and auxiliary items described in the city manager's memorandum dated September 4th, 214, which matters include the need to discuss subject knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Second. Who'd been seconded? Call the roll, please.
Harris?
No.
Singy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. We'll adjourn out of this meeting and adjourn in the executive session.
Do we have some signatures in here? Do we have my kids here or something?
Oh, you guys need signatures tonight? Come on up.
Yeah, I thought so.[1466.63]
Burke, do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I'm in the City Council declaring that it is in the best interest of the city to go into executive session in accordance with CMC 2.04.025A1 and AS44.62.310C1 and free to discuss potential litigation strategies associated with the design and construction contract pertaining to the Whitman Lake Hydro Project, which include the need to discuss subjects knowledge of which could have adverse impact on the finances of the city and discuss potential litigation strategy to the Cleveland Council within attorney-client privilege.
Moved in seconded. Call the roll please.
Seibertson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Well.
Wilson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready. Let me know when you're ready.
We're back in session. We met with management on the possible litigation on the Whitman project. They gave us an update. This time there's no motions or direction from the council at the table. That brings us down to our final executive session, which is a request for executive session annual evaluation of the city clerk. Madam Clerk, did you want to do this in public or into executive session?
Executive session, please.
All right, do we have a motion for such a thing?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm with the City Council going into executive session in accordance with CMC 2.04.025A2 with the purpose of conducting an annual evaluation of the city clerk, which may involve discussion subject that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person providing persons in their requested public discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call the roll please.
Zingy?
Oh, she took a quick break. I told her we'd take care of it for her.
Kuss?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris? Seibertson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to one. We'll go into executive session with the council and then we'll call KD in after we do some talking. Is that a R, do you think? Layman wants to know how to spell D-K-U-S.
Okay, let's see if we can get that kid here.
Because when you left here, I thought, were they still listening?
That's one of the...
I'm gonna sit that over there and walk out here.
All the pants we get are free. We bring them back from my office.
Marty said it was all yours.
Right, settle down. We met in executive session on the evaluation seat. I'm city clerk. At this time, we have no action.